We have here. So, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that the early voting will be done here.
Yes. Yep, right up next to the town clerk's office. All right, so with that in mind, I would welcome that motion.
Motion to approve the hours for voting in November, starting in October.
All those in favor?
Smith, I.
Newman, I.
Grant's an eye.
All right. And we have an application for an entrance to Public Way at 200 Justice Hill Road Cut Off. Everything seems to be in order. The only comment was from the DPW that since the driveway falls within a section of asphalt berm, the berm shall be cut back and the edges of the berm cut at a sloped angle. There shall be a slight bump paved on the edge of the driveway to act like the berm and keep the street drainage from entering the driveway. Finally, a minimum of a 12-inch pipe shall be installed from the berm to allow any water in the existing drainage gully to move freely across the new driveway location. That was the only issue. I would welcome a motion unless anybody has questions or comments.
Everybody signed off on it.
I would make a motion that we approve the permit for entrance to Public Way for Justice Hill Cut Off.
Just add with the conditions set by the DPW.
DPW.
All right, all of them in favor?
Smith.
Newman, I.
Grant's an eye.
And we have a couple of finance committee appointments. We have John Kilcoyne here with us as well as Mike Padula. John, would you like to get up and?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Honorable Select Board and Fed Con Chair and Acting Chair, I guess, right now. Yeah, I've agreed to do it. I would hopefully be appointed and I will do my best to attend as many meetings, hopefully all of them. There are some conflicts once in a while, but I think I, unlike last year, I think I can overcome those and make, attend and contribute to the meetings. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer my comments. So.
Questions for John?
No, I just would like to thank you for stepping up and volunteering for this and also thank you for being fashionably late like you are.
It wasn't that long. Yeah, so, and I will try to round up a couple more people that hope. I think we still need a couple, Joe and Mr. Fed Con, so I haven't given up on that. I have asked a couple, but gotta keep pushing, you know? People need to be reminded a few more times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More than anything, John.
Thank you, Chris.
No, I appreciate it also, John, that you're willing to do this again. Thanks. Give up some of that golf and go to finance committees.
Good timing here to be on a Fed Con winter weekend. I'm like this one.
All right, no questions for you, John. You've been around a while, so I know what you can do. Thank you very much. Mr. Padula, you're up.
Thank you, Select Board, for having me. I'd like to volunteer for this because I want to do, you know, I want to be in the town, involved in the town and do the best I can for the town as far as financing. And I've been on a lot of other committees as Maureen knows that and just hope to be, help the town financially and do the right job.
Any questions for Mike?
Just also thank you for stepping up and volunteering. We know how important it is to have volunteers like yourself to take over these committees and there's always a lack of response. Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. Yeah, you have plenty of experience in town as it is. I am a little surprised that you didn't mention that you were on the Senior Center Building Well, you were and.
I could stand up here and tell you all the committees I want.
Oh, no, 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 no. Are you retired now?
Five years ago.
Oh, Jesus, okay. No, I thank you for stepping in and stepping up. Appreciate it. And this is an important committee, as you know.
Yes, it is.
And as you know, not everybody always sees eye to eye, nose to nose. I've done it with you, I've done it with John and even Joe, even Mr. Mackey, I believe. You know, because we don't always agree, we don't always have the same path. So, thank you again, Michael and John.
I just have one question. Just wanted to know what you felt Sterling should really focus on going into fiscal year '26.
From what I've heard, the big thing is the school department, the school committee and all, and that stuff. That's one of our biggest expenses. And we have other expenses coming up, like DPW building and just other things in general. But I think one of the main things is the school. I don't know if we can do anything about it, but, you know, we'll try.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. All right, so we have to, we do have to fill Paul Austin's seat and that is for a one-year term to fill out that seat. So I would, I would make a motion or if anyone wants to make a motion that perhaps we have Mr. Padula fill the one-year appointment and then if you enjoy being on the finance committee, then just be reappointed after that, after filling out that one year.
What Christine's term, was she up this year?
She's up.
So she's, so the other term is three years?
Yeah. Sure, we mean once would be three years.
But we need to try and keep it staggered.
Yeah.
So it might be good to fill the one year just to keep that stagger going.
Does he have to enjoy it?
I mean, hell.
Is that a criteria or is it nobody would be on it?
Unless you guys want to fight over the one year. It's up to you. We have a one-year and a three-year up for grabs here, so.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right. All right.
Doesn't make any difference to me.
All right.
I would make a motion that we appoint Michael Padula to the vacant one-year finance committee position.
I second that. All of them in favor?
Smith, I.
Newman, I.
Grant's an eye.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we put in for the minutes that both the finance committee and moderator?
Oh, yes, so we do have to have a finance committee vote and.
We had that on the 19th and both Mr. Kilcoyne and Mr. Padula were unanimously appointed by the finance committee on the 19th.
Very good. And we have a letter from the moderator that he approves of Mr. Padula's appointment as well. All right, so all of them in favor? Did we do that already?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
All right. So next up, we have an appointment for Mr. Kilcoyne.
I would make a motion that we appoint John Kilcoyne to the vacant three-year finance committee position.
All right.
I second that.
Mr. King, I assume that you've, you say you recommend both?
The same meeting, the 19th, we approved both candidates that evening unanimously.
And the moderator has approved Mr. Kilcoyne as well. So all of them in favor?
Smith, I.
Newman, I.
Grant's an eye. So how many more chairs do you have to fill? Just one?
That's a two-year term, I believe.
Two years?
Oh, okay.
Tom would know for sure, but I believe, I believe Christina was up for reappointment and that was a three-year opening.
Yeah, I thought we looked the other day. Right.
It was two or three years.
I think so, yeah. I believe so.
We should double check the time you're on on each one of them.
Yeah, yeah. I believe when we looked the other day, it was two, three-year and a one-year. All right, so next we have an appointment to the Animal Control Advisory Board. I don't see Deborah here, so we have an application from Deborah Sendrowski who would like to be on the Animal Control Advisory Board. I've looked over her application.
So I would make a motion that we appoint Deborah Sendrowski to the Animal Control Advisory Board.
Wait one minute. Michael and John, both, don't forget to get sworn in.
And take the other six. Yeah, that's whatever it is.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. Did you do it? David made a motion.
I will rephrase that, that we make a motion that we appoint Deborah Sendrowski to the Animal Control Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second that.
All of them in favor?
Smith, I.
Newman, I.
Grant's an eye.
All right, we'll give Bill a second for his administrator's report. Welcome back, William, you are up.
Not too much. Still waiting on a couple of the grant awards. Hopefully answer on One Stop fairly soon. As we know, the ARPA funds have to be committed by the end of this calendar year and spent by '26, so finding out on the One Stop Downtown Grant is going to be pretty key to what we end up doing. We did have a department meeting yesterday for the budget document and annual town report document with the department heads, so we'll be getting that information out along with, you know, what they have to do for capital and budget. So same form as last year, just going to be a little bit different trying to get all that information into one spot versus two different document requests. As I noted, the budget and capital requests will go out fairly soon now that we've had that department meeting and departments will be getting their templates for the document. I did want to confirm or find out if we finalized those select board goals because those would be in the document as well and get sent out to the different boards and committees. I don't recall if we finalized them or just kind of compiled them and agreed, so.
Have to go back and look at the, have to go back and look at the meeting or the minutes to see if we.
I doubt you know, down in the.
Thought so, thought we did.
I couldn't, I didn't find it going back to some of the meetings, so I wasn't sure.
It was on our agenda.
Yeah.
And so I think, I think we did, but we can confirm.
Yeah. Obviously, we mentioned the SLCT 15th anniversary. It was a nice event last night and, you know, 15 years is a long time for, for them and many years to come, hopefully. Attended the Fire District Legislative Meeting yesterday. Definitely some legislation in front of them that obviously works to protect our public safety folks. Fred and I have been using some of the IT funds to replace and update some of the computers as outlined in our plan to keep those updated. The lift at the library will start demolition in the next couple of weeks, getting that project off the ground. And everything else hasn't really changed with the exception of the LED lighting for the library as well, which will be in October and November install. I believe those are the major things at this point.
And we did, we've sent on a message that we did receive another grant.
Yeah, Police Department received the road safety grant, which they use for some overtime relative to click it and take, click it or take it and some other safety programs. Distracted driving.
Questions for Bill?
Where are we with the MART monies?
I think we've pretty much got most of it, so we'll have to respond and they bill it monthly. EDC approved $3,000. I know the planner was getting some together and administrator funds will take the majority of it. As we get later into the year, we'll figure out the last couple thousand or so. I believe the friends.
Yeah, we're going to talk about it Friday.
And that would just about get it over the finish line, so any, any difference from that administrator funds would probably be able to cover at that point and then see what we want to do for the long term. If we want to maintain that and put it into our assessment through the Regional Transportation Authority or what we want to do. But this at least keeps it rolling for the foreseeable future.
Do you think?
I'm sorry, do you have a question related to that?
Yes, do you think they're going to try to make this some type of a contract or is just going to be a yearly?
So they've talked about putting it into their actual assessment, which comes off our cherry sheet number, assessment numbers. There isn't a grant that they can replace it with, so. It's if we're going to keep it and it maintains the program, it's worth it. If it starts to drop off, then we would have, probably have to reassess it, but when you're starting to get 200 and 300 rides a month, you know, that's pretty regularly used.
I think Stephen wants you to say something.
Yes, the public, except I don't have the date on it.
It's November 9th, right? I want to say 9th.
The zoning board, or the zoning.
Public hearing, the public sessions on, no, the 9th is a Saturday.
It is on a Saturday.
I'll just go get the flag.
I'm sure it's a night.
I believe it's a Saturday and a Thursday night, isn't it? Richard?
November 7th.
Oh, it is the 7th, all right.
It's an evening event. On the proposed changes to the bylaws upcoming, give anybody any chance that they would have to have input on it. There's five or six different ones relative to the MBTA community, probably ADUs and the other ones they put out, the gate, well, the soon-to-be Gateway District, which is currently the Performance Zone and a couple others. So any folks that have any input, November 7th over at the 1835 in the evening.
It's also, it's all posted online.
Yeah, so you can make comments to Stephen that way.
Yeah.
If you can't attend, so those are the, those are the major items.
I have another question. What was the end result of your meeting with Mr. LaCarr about the fields, you and the DPW?
So we met with them Friday. It seems to be at least the beginning steps of a plan moving forward, went reasonably well to try and get those conditions that the DPW board set out in, I don't know, late spring, early summer, to try and get those, the gate signs and some fencing up.
And we had a couple of COA board members, they can exit. Do you have anything you can fill us in on that? What, why, where?
Two of them have moved on. Both of them obviously thanked, thanked the board for their time specifically, you know, I know some have some personal things going on and can't speak too much else on.
Just concerning because they're two viable members and decided to jump ship. All right, those are my only questions.
David, anything?
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone here for public session? I would welcome a motion that we open public session.
Make a motion to open public session.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Smith, I.
Newman, I.
Laura, Richard Bean wrote, Mr. Caldwell picked my brain here about something that I wanted to revisit. Are you people intending on doing anything with that DOT Safe at School information that I gave you several months ago? The last time I talked about this, the feedback was that the grant writing opened in August. So that, you know, we can get millions of dollars from the state from that DOT study that was done back in 2023 to fix the roads and the driveways and the sidewalks and the signs and stuff at the schools that the team are like, you know, crosswalks to nowhere and stuff like that. So I didn't hear anything about that, so.
I believe it was open, going to open in the fall, so not, is that currently open?
At least we'll on our radar and something we're going to look at. We have to, also a contingent of us is a significant grant hedge, which we don't have funding for. We have to come up with 25%, so.
You know how that works?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so it's, it's not like put behind you?
It's getting uploaded.
Okay, so my second thing is, is it possible that we can contact the people that own the Sterling Inn and get them to mow the land across the street where the septic system is? It's kind of impeding the line of sight for the people that are coming out of school street and coming towards that intersection. I went down there and I told the DPW too that I chopped down all the weeds that were around the signs down there because you got a couple of poles there that you got oak trees, okay, growing out of. And the guys were down there from the Heritage Landscaping Company last week and I stopped to talk to them and they told me that they couldn't do anything across the street because they weren't told that they had permission to do it, even though that's the Sterling Inn's property. So I'm just asking, you know, if somebody could maybe contact somebody about that, okay? Because that's not the DPW and the DOT's responsibility, that's theirs, okay? So anyways, you got my message on that. The third thing is, this is the landmark from September 5th and there's a big article on the front of it about the disenchantment of the Holden litter, okay? And this is the same thing going on here in Sterling. So with this article, I don't know if you, if you guys get the landmark or if you read it, okay? It talked about the, the Select Board, this lady Stephanie Malroy is arranging for the town to adopt things that Clinton and Mansfield and other communities do to try to get area businesses involved to like adopt some places to keep clean and for the people in the town also to maybe adopt a street, okay? Because there's a lot of litter in this town and I was out on the streets yesterday and I cleaned up four bags of trash just down here, okay, at Dunkin' Donuts. And I was explaining to Bill before that I contacted Dunkin' Donuts on their website and told them that they need to maintain their garbage down there a little bit better. It's all over the place and they're not very good neighbors and they should have their employees and some of those businesses down there in that plaza to go out and clean the parking lot and clean things up. So, you know, I can't clean this whole town every time we turn around, but this article also mentions about the townwide cleanup, about having it bi-yearly, having it two times a year, not just once a year. And if we can get it on your agenda coming up here to start organizing for April, okay? Because last year when we did it, you did it the week after the Earth Day and it coincided with the day that the Sterling Street Market opens up up here. And so the, the bags were given out at the DPW open house, so there was like not a lot of participation in cleaning up the streets because people were more interested in doing those other two activities. So if we could use this area down here at the, at the common to give the bags out, it's more of a central location. So Earth Day is the best day on that weekend before the Sterling Street Market takes over the whole place over here. So that's my input on that and I'm more than willing to sit there and give bags out, okay, to people in the gloves and organize and help to organize that, okay? So, because I know Mr. Mackey has helped with it in the past, Roseanne's helped with it in the past, David helped, and I think, but having it down here is a better location than at the DPW. So, because it's consistency, that's the way we've had it in the past and I think it needs to stay that way. The week before, you can't really do because I think it's school vacation and people are gone and, you know, I, I personally, you know, think we should even have it earlier than that because by the time the Earth Day comes, the bugs are out and the poison ivy is out and the weather is getting warmer with this climate change and everything and so, but if we can at least do it, okay, by Earth Day, okay, that's my goal for that. So I can make a copy of this for you guys if you want to see, I'm putting a bug in your ear, okay, to see if you guys, the Select Board, will do something like Holden is still in here, okay? Because just last week I found a box over in the woods near the, the muddy pond ball field, somebody dumped a whole bunch of tools and colanders and garbage, okay, all over there near the ball fields. So it's, it's all over this town, it's all over this state, okay? It's just garbage everywhere. So this lady's, you know, she has a heart of like mine, okay? She's disenchanted with the trash. So and, you know, another lady in town here suggested, you know, doing something with the school, okay, to help these kids learn not to throw trash, okay, and how to learn to pick up, you know? Take a bag and go and when you go out and walk, okay, pick up trash.
I can work, I'm friends with a Select Board member of Holden, so I will definitely get in contact with him and have a discussion on what they're planning to do. Does you want to say something? Yes.
We already have the adopt.
Adopt a section, yes. We do have that. I don't know, I can't hear what she said. You know, but they're.
Everybody wants to, the problem is that people say they want to, they put their stuff in there and then they don't take care of it. So it looks worse than, you know, but we already have that.
What she said, I can't hear you. We already have the adopt a street area thing in town, but again, it's dealing with people who say, you know, that they're going to do something and they put the, you know, adopt the highway, whatever, and then they don't do it, so.
Well, then maybe we should just pick up the telephone and say, how you doing? Give them a friendly reminder.
All right, well, we will, we can work on that, we'll figure out.
Those are my ideas for today.
Sounds good. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else for open session? I would welcome a motion that we close open session.
I would make a motion to close.
All of them in favor? Newman, I.
Just a reminder that tomorrow is, Friday rather, is the Foss Breakfast and we have Chocks at School Celebrity Servers. So the Friends Group is encouraging parents and grandparents to bring their kids for breakfast and then just walk them over to the school afterwards. Can't beat the $4 donation. And I also wanted to thank SLCT for dinner last night, it was very nice, nicely done. They had some good clips, was fun to look back on some of that stuff, could use more of it, just saying. It's fun, but no, you've always done a good job for us.
Last motion.
I would make a motion that we adjourn this evening.
All of them in favor? Newman, I.
Grant's an eye.